The City Council Meeting of January 25th, 2024. Ms. Amy, oh, not pledge. I always mix that up. Amy, you want to do the pledge?
Sure.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Amy, will you call roll?
J.P. Hodges. Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Melissa Choate. Jim Ley.
Here.
Rebecca Prince. Mayor.
Here.
Louis Short.
Here.
Jim Adams. Ally Sugg.
Here.
Andy Eklund.
Here.
And Press.
On the record show, we have a quorum. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes plus excerpts as presented of the December 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting.
It's your move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy, when you're ready.
Ally Sugg.
Abstain.
Jim Adams. Louis Short.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Ley.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
We'll come back to that when the other three members are present. Next, approval of the payments journals dated December 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023.
They'll be in the same shape?
Yeah.
No, you can still approve the payments.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Jim Ley.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of Street Fund Financial Statements, Sanitation Fund, General Fund Financial Statement, Community Center, and O&M, and Miscellaneous Fund dated December 31st, 2023.
May we approve that?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Ley.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Any questions for your supervisors? Okay, unfinished business, we got the parks ordinance. This is a lengthy one, if you want to pass it, you can, you don't have to read the entire ordinance the first time, you can pass by title only.
Okay, I'm gonna request that we read it by title only.
Second.
An ordinance regulating the use of public parks in the city of Heber Springs prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions and declaring an emergency.
Took me three days to read that one.
(laughing).
Every time I did something, I'd get interrupted, I'd start all over, lose my mind.
Well, we'll still have to pass it like we do the other ordinances, but we just don't have to read the whole thing, so we'll have to...
Need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to vote and then do a motion to waive the... Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So...
So, Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Ley.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
So, we need to suspend it for the second reading? Make a motion to suspend the rules and read it by title only for the third reading?
Second.
Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Ley.
Yes.
An ordinance regulating the use of public parks in the city of Heber Springs prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions and declaring an emergency.
We got it three times, right?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion, we suspend the rules and read it by title only for the third time.
Second.
Ms. Amy?
Do you have to read the title?
Want me to read it again?
I don't know. In my notes, it says you will.
I think we vote, then we read it.
Okay.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried, an ordinance regulating the use of public parks in the city of Heber Springs prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions and declaring an emergency. Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good job, Josh. What was that ordinance number?
2024-01.
That paperwork might have to be changed on top of that.
Sure will. Good eye. Okay, any more discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Ley.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. On unfinished business, be it a dump truck repair invoice, we still don't have yet, I believe it... Scott, do you know where they are on that, on the dump truck?
I actually got an update on that today.
Okay, great.
It's gonna need a turbo, so we're roughly looking at about $10,326.48 right now.
Yeah, but as long as we stay under 12,000, we really did good on that.
Okay, great.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there an emergency clause on that?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I could get a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second.
I'm sorry, who?
Who made the motion?
Louis and Andy.
Louis and Andy. Thank you. I thought about it and then squirreled.
It's okay. Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, Ms. Amy.
You're welcome.
Sanitation ordinance, tabled until March?
Yeah, first quarter.
March.
Yeah. Okay, new business. State of the city address. All right, 2024 is here, and the city finds itself in a strong financial situation, and we are looking forward to the year ahead. In 2023, the city was able to complete some bond projects, Phase 1 of Sulphur Creek Trails, new restrooms at Sandy Beach, new playground equipment and turf has been installed at Spring Park, street repairs in Huntington Place, and the South 7th Street Drainage Project. We are continuing with Phase 2 of the trails, stormwater projects, downtown beautification, community center rehab, and plans for the splash pad. Some new projects are gonna be new base for the fire department and renovations at the new municipal building. We've been attending a lot of meetings with state and local officials in preparation for the Great American Eclipse that will be happening on April 8th, 2024. Local residents will need to gather groceries, prescriptions, and top off their cars with gasoline prior to the event. There's gonna be a huge influx of people. It will also be an advantage for Heber Springs residents to do the necessary travel on backroads. Events are planned to be held at Spring Park and Sandy Beach and the Heber Springs Airport. There will be live music vendors and food trucks present. Viewing sites include ASU Campus, the Latimer Center, JFK Overflow, Community Center, the Sports Complex, Sandy Beach, and don't forget your solar eclipse glasses. There is a website at heberspringseclipse2024.com. Again, the state of the city is strong, and our future continues to look bright, and in closing, I want to thank all of the local businesses and residents and my employees and department heads for everything that they do, it is an honor to serve this community. Okay, next, we have the resolution for the procedure of council meetings. Bless you. Has everybody looked this over, is everything good, do we, is there anything that y'all want to change? It is the same. You know, I think it's been a while since we have read it, would you mind?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Do we put a resolution number on start with?
2024-01.
First one.
First one, first meeting of the year.
A resolution establishing procedures for the conduct of meetings from the Heber Springs City Council, whereas Arkansas Code annotated 1443-501A1C requires that the governing body of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas determine the rules of its proceedings during the first meeting in January. Now therefore, let it be, now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, meetings of the City Council of Heber, city of Heber Springs, Arkansas shall be held in the council room at City Hall 1001 West Main Street or Community Center 201 Bobby Jean Lane, Heber Springs, Arkansas. However, nothing shall preclude the relocation of meetings, regular or special, to any alternate location. Notes will be given to the public at least five days in advance in the event of the scheduled relocation. All meetings of the City Council, regular or special, will be recorded in accordance with Arkansas Code 2519-106. Section 2, regular meetings of the Heber Springs City Council will be held on Thursday of each month, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Special meetings and times and locations will be posted on the door of the Heber Springs City Council Room and as otherwise required. Section 3, an agenda shall be prepared by the Heber Springs City Clerk for every, for every regular and special meeting of the City Council. The agenda shall contain any item of business that any member of the Heber Springs City Council or the mayor presents as inclusion on the agenda. Any item of business to be included will be submitted with a brief written explanation for the requested consideration to the city clerk no later than 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, one week prior to the regular meeting date. Agendas for special meetings will be prepared for the consideration of the requirement for public notice. Agenda shall be delivered by mail or other means to members of the City Council, mayor, and press, no later than seven days prior to the meeting date. Section 4, notwithstanding the foregoing subsection of this ordinance, the City Council may, by a majority vote of the members present, elect to place any matter before the City Council for consideration at that meeting. Section 5, the city clerk shall place any items of business to be before the members of the Heber Springs City Council on the agenda under the appropriate category according to the following order of business. Items under new business which are not resolved shall be placed under old business until resolution or removal by council vote. Order is a call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call, motion to waive the reading of the minutes, and approval of minutes, approval of payments, financial statements, supervisor reports, old business, new business, open mic announcements, and adjournment. Section 6, any ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict here with or hereby repel to the extent of such conflict. Section 7, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the section phrases or provisions.
Thank you, Lane.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we have a contract renewal with the Humane Society for 2024. I just need a motion to renew the contract.
Nothing's changed on any of these, right? The prices all go aside?
The one on the senior center did. Didn't we increase that one?
Yeah. But not on this one, not the Humane Society.
Yeah, but all the other ones were...
There's talk about it, but they can't confirm this year, so...
About what?
Raising the prices.
So, do these decisions work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the Humane Society contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, the contract renewal with Sugarlo Heritage Council for '24.
Make a motion to accept the contract?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, contract renewal for Cleveland County Aging. This is the one that we gave them more money, $2,000 more this year.
10% increase, wasn't it?
Yes, $2,000 increase.
That's the best we can do?
We discussed that in the budget, that it was, what, 9%? What did we say?
I don't remember the percentage, we did it off a percentage.
It was the percentage of basically what?
It was discussed.
Yeah. Inflation, or whatever, 9% or whatever, so that's what...
We need to keep an eye on that, though, they might need to up again next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we did give, we gave them money in December.
Extra money, December.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, though, we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, she'll let me know.
Because, I think, if I understand it right, the county...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exceptional step up as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was 10% increase.
Okay.
Did I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm glad, because God delivers the meals. He told me it's, some people, it's the only meal they get all day long.
I know. That's sad. Okay, I've got a contract renewal for the Division of Disabled Veterans for 2024.
And it's the same as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we accept the contract for the DAV?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next, ordinances doing business with myself and Stephen Griffin.
We just lump all these together, they all gotta be done individually?
They gotta be done individual, sorry.
What ordinance number will that be?
It's a lot of work.
2024-02.
I'll read this one.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2024-02, an ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of the mayor, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Being ordained by the City Council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Stephen Griffin, a full-time employee at the Heber Springs Police Department, is married to Mayor Casey Griffin. Section 2, in accordance with the accordance code annotated section 1442-107V1, the City Council hereby authorizes the Heber Springs Police Department to employ Stephen Griffin despite any direct or indirect benefit Mayor Casey Griffin may derive from said employment. Section 3, the authority granted herein shall be limited in scope and time to the continued full-time employment of Stephen Griffin with the Heber Springs Police Department.
Make a motion, place on second reading by title only?
Second.
An ordinance, oh, no, we got a vote on that.
Yeah. Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of the mayor, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, place on third and final reading by title only?
Second.
Ms. Amy, when you're ready.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You got it, Doc.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Ready, third down?
Oh, sorry.
Just a title.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of the mayor, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Now go, Andy.
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Amy?
Rutherford Green?
Probably.
Lane Tubbs?
(laughing).
Yes, sorry.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Next, ordinance doing business with Melissa Choate and Stephen Choate, he's on the fire department.
Ordinance number 2024-03?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Fire Department to employ the spouse of a member of the City Council, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Being ordained by the City Council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Stephen Choate, a part-time fireman with the Heber Springs Fire Department, is married to council member Melissa Choate. Section 2, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107V1, the City Council hereby authorizes the Heber Springs Fire Department to employ Stephen Choate despite any direct or indirect benefit council member Melissa Choate may derive from said employment. Section 3, the authority granted herein shall be limited in scope and time to the continued part-time employment of Stephen Choate with the Heber Springs Fire Department during the term of office of council member Melissa Choate.
Make a motion, place on second reading by title only?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Fire Department to employ the spouse of a member of the City Council, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, place on third and final reading by title only?
Second.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams, can you jump in in the middle of an ordinance?
Probably not.
We don't need it.
I apologize for my turn, you just got a real barn burner game down there.
Did you win? Did you win?
Yes, we did, it was overtime, so it was even later than that, I apologize.
That's okay, welcome.
I'm a little hoarse, but it'll be okay.
It's okay. Oh, motion carried.
Third reading?
Third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Fire Department to employ the spouse of a member of the City Council, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Where are we?
The motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance. I didn't mean to screw everybody up.
We're gonna go, Jim.
Who seconded?
Lane.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have ordinance doing business with spouses, police department chief Brian Hale and Tammy Hale, she's a community center instructor.
Ordinance number 2024-04, an ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of a department head, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes, being ordained by the City Council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Brian Hale is chief of police, is a full-time employee of the Heber Springs Police Department, and is married to Tammy Hale, a part-time employee of the Heber Springs Community Center. Section 2, in accordance with the Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107V1, the City Council hereby authorizes the Heber Springs Community Center to employ Tammy Hale despite any direct or indirect benefit police chief Brian Hale may derive from said employment. Section 3, the authority granted herein shall be limited in scope and time to the continued part-time employment of Tammy Hale with the Heber Springs Community Center.
Make a motion, place on second reading by title only?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of an apartment head, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, place on third and final reading by title only?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of a department head prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
My second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, an ordinance with Mr. Lane Tubbs doing business with visual identity.
Ordinance number 2024-05. An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Councilmember Lane Tubbs doing business as visual identity in TUBTS embroidery and screen printing, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows, section one, Councilmember Lane Tubbs holds an ownership interest in and operates two businesses within the City of Heber Springs that provide graphic design, supplies, and services, which businesses operate under the names of Visual Identity and TUBTS embroidery and screen printing. Section two, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107B1, and subject to the requirements of Heber Springs Municipal Code, section three dot oh four dot oh five, the City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Councilmember Lane Tubbs doing business as visual identity in TUBTS embroidery and screen printing despite any direct or indirect benefit that Councilmember Lane Tubbs may derive from said businesses. Section three, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Councilmember Lane Tubbs doing business as visual identity in TUBTS embroidery and screen printing shall be limited in scope, time, and cost to the purchase of graphic design, signage, screen printing, decals, and related products and supplies.
Make a motion, please, on second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Louis Short.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Upstain.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Councilmember Lane Tubbs doing business as visual identity in TUBTS embroidery and screen printing, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, please, on third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Upstain.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Councilmember Lane Tubbs doing business as visual identity in TUBTS embroidery and screen printing, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Upstain.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, an ordinance doing business with Red River Radio, also Ally Sugg.
Want me to read that one?
I'll let you read that one.
Be great.
All right. What ordinance, some verses?
2025-06.
For 2024.
We're skipping ahead of you?
Sorry.
All right, that's no problem, 2024-06. An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Red River Radio prescribing the extent of said authority for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows, section one, Red River Radio Incorporated is a business which Councilmember Ally King Sugg holds executive or managerial office and ownership interests. Section two, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107B1, the City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Red River Radio despite any indirect benefit Councilmember Ally King Sugg may derive from said business. Section three, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Red River Radio Incorporated shall be limited in scope, time, and cost to the purchase of radio or time related to advertising, promoting of community events in the City of Heber Springs.
Make a motion, please, on second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
I'll second. You second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second. You can second.
That'd know it'd be good.
The Jims have seconded.
Ditto.
Jim square.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Louis, oh, sorry. Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Upstain.
Motion carried.
Ready?
Ready.
Ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Red River Radio Incorporated prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make a motion, please, on third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Upstain.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ordinance 2024-06.
Yes, sir.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Heber Springs to conduct business with Red River Radio Incorporated prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Upstain.
Jim Lee.
Andy.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we've got the ordinance for the attorney and city clerk salary resolution.
Want me to do that one too?
This says ordinance at the top.
Is it a resolution or an ordinance? Resolution?
I think it's a resolution.
I don't think it's an ordinance.
It says ordinance in this name.
I'll throw it.
All right.
Provisions of this ordinance.
Let's call it ordinance 2024-07.
Okay, let's do it.
2024-07?
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Oh, seven.
Ready?
Ready.
Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance establishing the salary of certain municipal officials in the City of Heber Springs and for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows, section one, salary of the city clerk is set at $9,294.56 per year, section two, the salary of the city attorney is set at $48,189.46 per year, section three, the effective day of this ordinance shall be January 1st, 2024. Section four, severability, in the event that any portion, provision, subsection, section, or part of this ordinance is later ruled to be invalidity, route to be...
Invalid?
It should be invalid, shall not affect the other provisions of this ordinance which can be given effect without the invalid portion or portions, and to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be separable.
Make a motion, please, on second reading by title only.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-07, an ordinance establishing the salary of certain municipal officials in the City of Heber Springs and for other purposes.
Make a motion, please, on third and final reading by title only.
Second. Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ready?
Ready.
2024-07, an ordinance establishing the salary of certain municipal officials in the City of Heber Springs and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Louis Short.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, next, I need, um, a motion to renew the CDs that are maturing today. Interest rates are still pretty amazing.
For another three months.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we renew the...
To certificate a deposit for three months?
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion?
CDs for short.
Ms. Amy, when you're ready.
Nice question. If you know what certificate of deposit.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a buyback agreement for new, two new garbage trucks. Any questions?
Um, something rolling off of this, this is a buyback agreement?
Right.
Can you explain, what are we doing here on this one? I've read all the stuff, is this addition two, or are we just buying them off the lease?
No, the two we have now, they're up under two a year.
Okay.
So, uh, renew and get two other ones basically to replace those.
Okay, so those will roll off, go back to...
Yeah, those will roll off, and I think on that deal, uh, I think they were 102,000, they give back a piece. This new one's 124. Yes, 124, in two years, they'll guarantee a buyback.
Is this about the same amount? Is this about the same amount we were paying before, give or take?
Yeah, they went up about 15 grand a truck, so...
Yeah.
It came out to be like 432 and some change. On our last ones, I think we paid like 395 something, you know, in that area.
And this was in the budget, correct? We knew about this coming up, was this in the budget?
Yeah, they're basically every two years.
Have we fixed the other engine on the other one, is that in shop right now?
Oh, we talked about it.
Still at the shop.
Still at the shop.
Sorry.
You said, what, you said 10 grand?
Yeah.
We're still...
Oh, yeah.
And that was the one we just owned, right? That's just an old one we own? That dump truck's just one we own, right? The one that's getting a new engine or whatever?
Yeah, that's our, yeah, that's the one, actually, I want to leave on the lease back once it gets fixed.
What do we do if we don't do it? Do they, do we go back and have to use shovels, or what do we have to do? Pretty much, okay.
Well, we want trash trucks.
Okay, I was just, just checking. So, weigh in your options.
So, the two hiles, they're two years old. Are the, are these two? Yeah, the aisles we have now are, they're two years, yes.
Yeah. So, River City will buy those back, and we will...
Get two new.
It's like a lease for two more.
Yeah, basically, get another two for another two years.
Yeah.
And they're giving us more, but, for the, they're guaranteeing us more for these in two years, but is it enough to offset the difference of... Yeah, I mean, you figure, and they, they kind of guestimated the payment because, because it's by interest rate, so, you know, it's fluctuating right now, and supposedly, they're saying they're gonna go down, goes like 4650... A month for the trucks, both, you know, double it.
Is, is that the lease payment that's on the financials of anticipated budget of 100 grand? Is that what that one is?
Yeah, I think it is.
Because we've got, looks like we've paid 46,000 of it so far, or is that a different lease?
Well, we have the...
We got two, I mean, I don't know if that was the dump truck, I don't remember.
But that 100,000 that we budgeted, and I don't remember off the top of my head, that's, that's budgeting in the existing lease, which essentially would be turned over to the new lease, and the dump truck, or whatever. So, it looks like we have 54,000 left in the budget for lease payments, give or take. No, that was last year. I'm looking at last year's payment journals, sorry. So, we only used 46,000 of the 100,000 that we estimated last year. The lease payments.
No, this is gonna be last year's.
I mean, this is last year's financials, but...
And Scott, how long before they deliver on these? Five months, probably. They still gotta be built, gotta find chassis.
So, they're 432,000 less the buyback, and then we lease them, so that, so this 432,000, is that the lease amount?
Well, that's the actual cost of...
Cost.
Yeah, buyback, basically, they give you whatever the cost, in this case, it was 432,000 and something.
Minus a couple hundred for buying the old ones back, is that right, or no?
Yes.
Okay, so about $230 different, $230,000 difference, and then the lease of that is about, what, a grand a year, or something like that?
Yeah, I wanna say, I don't remember exactly, it's like, uh...
Did I just not see that page? I'm sorry. Was that in the packet? Lease amounts?
The, uh...
For this year's budget?
Well, like, are we agreeing to, is this like a proposal to go ahead and go forward with this?
Yes.
It'd be nice to know how much the lease was gonna be for this year or two, right? Because the 432,000 is how much if we were to buy them, right? Minus however much they give us back, and then broken down into a lease payment. Do we, do we know what that lease pa, lease amount is? Wouldn't that what he's saying, because...
It was estimated.
Because he's estimating because interest rates, right?
Yeah, they just gave me an estimate, until you actually lock in, he said, because the interest rate is what determines what the...
And I apologize for getting your way, you can't have, out of it. What, um, what is that payment? What is the, the lease payment?
Uh, he said it would be like 4650, and he's just guessing, he said that's probably high.
Okay, so about 50,000 for the year?
Yeah.
Say 50, okay. Okay, so, do we want to make a motion to approve a lease buyback payment for 50,000 dollars maximum? For two new aisle things, if these are the correct ones that Scott needs to turn back the other ones?
Yes.
That's probably what that 46,000 dollar lease was last year, I would assume, in the budget, I don't remember. I make a motion to allow Scott to spend up to 50,000 on a lease, for a two-year lease, 50,000 per year, for two aisle garbage trucks as submitted in the court.
That will work out to be closer to 56 than 50, at that 4650 price. I don't know if we need to...
Can I do 56?
I'll be saving.
Okay. I'll amend that motion to 60,000.
Don't do it if you don't go.
Is that your final answer?
Second.
Who, who's second now?
We should do a motions like the city attorney's salary, there should be pennies involved. 59,976.46.
Well, get to it.
I need to use a pencil with y'all.
No, 60,000.
Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, on the police department vehicle, we would like to waive the competitive bidding. And the invoice is for 40,234.
What did we put in for the...
45.
Put in 45?
Mm-hmm.
So, he's out of, he's out of police car money.
Yep. Yep.
You're out of police car money.
After this.
End of January, made it all the way through January.
He knows, he knows.
All right. In one month.[1489.81]
Check.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to waive the competitive bidding for the car, and then we'll have to approve the invoice.
Is it in stock?
I'm sorry?
Is it in stock?
It is.
Yes.
I make that motion.
Second.
Is this the second? Did we get one in December, too?
Yes.
In, uh...
October?
I believe was when y'all approved, October and November y'all approved.
I was gonna say, because there was one in stock... Yeah, because there was one in stock that we were gonna get cheaper or something.
Yeah. It's a way from the end of the year.
Yeah, Ally, that's right.
Okay, that's what I was...
Okay, Ms. Amy?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
And Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the invoice for $40,234.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Next, we've got a renewal of three-year lease on our Mack 10-yard dump truck.
So this is the same, essentially, we're just trading in an older three-year-old dump truck for a new one?
This is a true lease, where the other one's a buyback.
Okay, this is a true lease.
Yeah.
And is it replacing one that is rolling off?
Yes, yeah, it's actually done next month.
What's, what are we paying on that amount, just off the top of your head? Is it about the same?
Probably 18, so...
Okay, it's about the same.
This one's 2100.
Yeah, it's three years of...
I mean, this is the same one we talked about, one dump.
Which one?
When we were doing the budgeting stuff, this is not the same dump truck we talked about. We're getting one of them repaired and this one?
Yes, I thought it was getting one repaired and then...
One replaced.
And then one, the lease replaced.
That's the only other one we got, right?
Make a motion to lease a 2025 Mack MD-6 with a 10-foot dump body for 2100 a month, for a 36-month lease.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, sir. That was greatly detailed, Jim.
Thank you.
Ms. Amy?
Lane Tubbs?
Did you get all that?
I did. Lane Tubbs?
Give me one second.
Oh. Is this a renewal?
I'm sorry?
Is this a renewal?
It's a new lease.
It's a new, okay, I had renewal on my note, I just wanted to make sure.
They have this in stock, too?
Okay, all right.
They have this in stock, too?
What's that?
Is it in stock?
Is it in stock?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next, we have Eclipse overtime hours. I wanted to do these separate from the budget, and these are just guestimates. But we wanted to get this approved just in case.
You got a choice?
Oh, is, I don't know any of them. The state police gonna be able to assist extra in the city?
The state police will have, um, three officers in their, you know, they all have their own district. And so it'll be, I mean, they can't take off work, it's all hands on deck. So we will have our three where they will be within the county. Who knows? Yep, everybody.
I'm assuming public works is preparation of and then cleanup after, all the...
Yeah. And we're not real sure how we're gonna have to run. We may have to run at night, they might have to work some weird hours. It's just gonna depend on the traffic and how big the influx of people is.
So how'd y'all, like, on four days, or how many days did y'all base this on?
Um, I think everybody's a little bit different. Like, Chief Hill wants to do 12-hour shifts, so these are overtime hours based on that.
For like, the weekend, or?
No, it's a week.
For the week?
A whole week.
Okay.
We're getting different information on that as far as people coming in, when they leave. And so I'm just needing enough to make sure we can cover it.
On each end.
And then when we shut it down, we need to.
Ours is six days as well, Thursday through Tuesday.
I have a question.
Yeah?
If it's only gonna be April, I mean, I appreciate the information, but it's only gonna be April, we won't be reaching the budget limits at this point, right? So does it, this is just informational, we're not voting on anything like this.
Well, it could possibly be overtime hours. That's what this is for, if you want to wait and see how much...
Well, isn't it, I mean, they're not at the edge of the amount of money budgeted for salaries for the year, so it's just gonna be...
So we could do it after, right?
We could, uh-huh. Would y'all prefer that?
Yeah, just to, because those may be completely, they're gonna be completely different.
Well, and they could be smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, well, just be aware that this is what we're looking at.
I mean, I figure we'd probably leave it to the discretion of the supervisors to make sure that everything is safe, cleaned up, and...
Absolutely.
Ready to go, and then, it's not like we're bumping up, it's not like it's December, we're at the end of...
I understand what you're saying, I'm just wanting to make sure that I can tell my people of being sure that the council will...
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I think everyone's fine with this, I don't think we need to vote on it. I think it's, we appreciate the information, and then if we need to make the allowance as we get to the end of the...
As needed?
Yeah, we can budget 30,000 more for police at the end of the year if they hit the end of the budget, right?
That's great, yes, sir.
Isn't that the way that would be? Technically, you could buy his car out, or you could buy it later, right? It doesn't make any difference.
Right.
Yeah, because I mean, I would say if you're looking at this, I would think that if you're gonna have that much police, that public works is probably gonna need more.
I think we just give them the freedom within reason, it sounds like they're within reason to make sure we're safe and clean and taken care of, right?
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Okay, next up, we've got a burn site for Public Works. I'm lost in what organs this will be.
This was the movie, you know?
Yeah.
It's down at Public Works, on Fourth Street. Is this '08, possibly?
This is...
It was emailed yesterday, you know, last night.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
I never did, I shouldn't look that closely, I found that one properly.
Yeah, I didn't know where that was either.
Oh, it's down off of Fourth Street at Public Works.
Oh, so we just basically...
It's what we've been using.
I was about to say, so we just have to...
Designated as a...
Yeah, designated or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Resolution number 2024, no, this is resolution, so is it '02?
This is, um...
I think so, we've only done one resolution tonight, yeah.
Yes, I had the, uh...
You have this, Jim?
2024-02.
All of those burn sites?
A burning resolution?
Yeah, I'm looking for it, hold on, I read it already, but... Burn, do you have a hard copy of that or you on your?
No, I have it on my iPad.
Do you want mine?
No, give me a second, I'd like everyone to wait.
You want me to just read it?
You got it?
Yep, I got it. All right, Burning Resolution 2024 dash...
'02.
'02. All right, ready?
Ready.
Resolution to designate a site for vegetation disposal and burning by the City of Hubers Springs, Arkansas. Be resolved by the City of Hubers Springs, Arkansas, that 1/18/2023, the 94th General Assembly of the Arkansas Legislature passed Act 27 to amend the Arkansas Water and Air Pollution Control Act to create exception for vegetation disposal burning by certain entities. Two, Arkansas Code annotated 84305-7 concerning exceptions to the law related to air pollution under the Arkansas Water and Air Pollution Control Act for certain governmental entities was amended to read as follows. Seven, fires set or permitted by any public officer, board, councilor, commission when the fire is set or permission to burn is given in the performance of the duty of the public officer, board, councilor, commission for the purpose of weed and vegetation disposal in prevention or elimination of a fire hazard, or the instruction of employees and the methods of firefighting which is necessary in the opinion of the public officer, board, councilor, commission, or from fires set pursuant to permit for the purposes of instruction of employees of private industrial concerns and methods of firefighting, or for civil defense instruction. Three, the City of Hubers Springs, Arkansas, identified a site with an approximate center point located at latitude 352910.0261 north, longitude 920147.4497 west, to encompass a rectangle of 235 feet by 140 feet long, as shown in Exhibit A attached that it desires to use for the purpose of hauling vegetation, limbs, leaves, vines, trees, et cetera. Disposal as allowed pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 84305-7 as amended, which will take effect on or about July 6, 2023. Set location, four, set location has been evaluated by the Fire Chief of the City of Hubers Springs, Arkansas, who found it to be desirable location for vegetation disposal because it's not in a flood zone, and a feature to locate that will prevent unauthorized dumping. Five, City of Hubers Springs, Arkansas, for the foregoing reasons hereby designates latitude 352910.0261 north, longitude 920147.4497 west, for the purposes of vegetation disposal pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 84305-7 as amended and effective on or about July 6, 2023.
Thank you.
The motion here. Passed the resolution.
Yes, resolution, we don't have to read it three times, do we?
Nope.
Second.
Can I ask something before we vote?
Yep.
When it talks about the, for instruction and method of firefighting, does that prevent us from using any other training facility? Or you gotta do everything there? Just strictly for this? Why'd they put you guys in there for training and stuff?
Okay.
Any more discussion? Questions? Ms. Amy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
I guess I do have a question. Is this a one-time offer wish, or is it for whenever they need?
It's for whenever they need. It's just designating that site for this purpose. Motion carried.
So this solves, basically, a lot of the issues of picking up limbs and leaves, right?
Yep, well, the law passed earlier last year, and they have to wait for it to go into effect.
Which was the whole reason why we couldn't pick up limbs and leaves, was because we didn't have anywhere to put them, and we couldn't burn. But now, since we could burn them, because they passed this law, we're good to go.
We are good to go.
It's only the limbs.
Right, limbs.
It says it's only the limbs.
Oh, okay.
Yes, not the...
Not leaves?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, motion carried. Now we get to go back to the beginning and do these minutes. I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes, plus excerpts as presented of the December 21st, 2023 city council meeting.
Were you waiting for me?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have to stand, I'm just kidding.
Making a motion to approve the minutes as presented, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Louis, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Amy?
Sorry, hold on, um, Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
I abstain.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Yeah, it's the only one we had to go back and do. I'll have to make a note of it. Okay, open mic, would anybody like to address the council?
Good evening.
Hold on a second.
Hold on.
We're gonna meet you. Uh, we've had some bad weather, and I would like to talk about the intersection of Pine and Case. It freezes over, the students there, it's been a mess there. They have trouble driving when the roads are clear. And is there any way you can put some sand down or something? Because this has been an issue for years, but with all the cold weather we've had the last couple of weeks, it's been terrible there. Is there anything that can be done?
Yeah, it was frozen before the icing came, yeah.
It's got a spring.
Well, yeah, I was wondering where that water comes from, there's always one.
It does, but in the meantime, I mean, the kids were backed up.
There's also gravel that doesn't help.
You know, first hour, I can't even take tenants because they're in line. So if something could be put down there, I mean, you know, that would greatly help.
Okay.
Well, that creek, I call it a creek when it's like it was, runs in front of my house.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, and we had one guy swear up down he was gonna fix it, of course, he's gone, he never did fix it. It's a spring. And higher the lake gets, the more pressure it's got. I've got a sump pump in my basement, under my house, and just every second it was putting water out from under my house, down, you know, set of rock steps. I tell you, it's a pain.
It is, but we would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Paula. Okay, announcements, Ms. Vicki needs your statement of financial interest by the 31st. Have y'all gotten, received her paper, or, okay, great. And it's gotta be notarized, and we have one at City Hall if you need her. The Election Commission is getting ready and trained up for the early voting that's gonna start on February 20th. Early voting's from February 20th to March 4th, and then March 5th will be election day. Uh, before the meeting, I passed out a draft of a contract for Survival Flight that encompasses the entire county. I would like for you guys to look over that, and I would like to set up a workshop. And we can decide that date now or later.
We're all here, might as well figure it out, right?
That's right, I like it.
We're all here because we're not all there.
So I'm gone the week of the 5th through the 9th.
Okay, the next week?
Basketball's over after the 20th, which one?
After the 22th.
Okay, do you want to wait that long, do you want to do... The 22nd?
So we wouldn't be in time for next month's meeting?
No, and that's okay, because our contract's not up until later in the year.
Yeah. What about that first week of March, even? Do we have anything then, anybody?
I can do that. I can't do that Thursday.
Can I ask something?
Yes, Shane.
I was gonna ask that we, if we would like to do the workshop, we do it as soon as possible. One thing that's not stated in that contract is we are in negotiations to purchase some new units that would be used here and in the county. But it's one of those things where we've not been able to get our hands on new units, and now they're available. But the longer we wait, we may lose that opportunity to grab these up, and it may be 2025 before I get an opportunity to get them in. And I'll say if we have to do it tomorrow, but what I'm saying, I understand our contract isn't up until November, with a, I think, July 31st extension period. But the sooner in time that we can execute this extension, which goes into the financing of those units, when you go to do the financing, when you go to a financier and you say, well, I've got 11 months left on my contract, they don't want to do much business with you, but so if we can get the extension and stuff done, or at least have this meeting the sooner the better. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Trucks.
Okay.
Let's get the meeting done sooner. I'll be here next week, not the week after, I have a trade show.
And then the next week is our city council meeting.
Correct, the 15th.
So that's why I was saying, either the week of the 20th, that, the kids are at school, 19, or anyone said it. So either the week of the 20th, or we could even wait till that first week in March.
Not next week? Okay.
I have a ballgame every single...
Every night? That's a lot.
Well, because of the ice and snow, everything...
You're making up?
Yeah.
Well, and everything's, everything's over that week, the 12th, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we could wait till the 20th, basketball's over, so...
The 20th, it's over?
The week, it's the week of the 19th, but she said school.
Oh, do you want to do that?
Basketball's done, done.
Like, I could do the 20th?
We could do the 20th?
Let's just do the 20th.
February 20th?
February 20th?
Or the 22nd, or something.
February 20th.
Shane, is that doable?
I'm sorry?
February 20th? Grant, do you have something? Yes, sir?
Did the judge talk to you about the...
Yeah, uh... Let us have our workshop first. Great.
February 20th?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, let's get our workshop done first, and then we can all be together, right?
Yeah.
All right, so this is gonna be a workshop.
6 o'clock here?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Great.
Is everybody else good?
Good.
I was really hoping I didn't have to talk about ambulances anymore.
Gotta renew, can you believe it's been four years?
Yeah.
I wish y'all would do this next year, when I'm not...
Yeah.
Sorry, welcome to the party. Um, we are working on some Eclipse events, we'll have stuff down at Sandy Beach, food vendors, live music, face painting. It's gonna be a good time, and then, just in time, JP, and then, at Sandy, no, not Sandy Beach, but also at Spring Park, it's gonna be kind of like a Spring Fest, it'll be the Eclipse Fest with food trucks and vendors as well. And I think that they're gonna do some art shows and some kids' art shows. And then the day of the eclipse, we will have some viewing sites around town and some activities. We'll have a pickleball tournament up here at Sandy Beach, there'll be volleyball and cornhole. And then our viewing sites will be the community center, the sports complex, ASU campus, the Latimer Center, and JFK Overflow. Am I missing one?
Did we get letters?
Sir?
I might want to let everybody know Sugardome Mountain is gonna be closed.
It will be closed that Monday. For the eclipse, yes. Yes, thank you. I need to put that on the website.
Can he, who's doing Spring Fest?
It's up in the air, it's up for grabs.
So y'all aren't gonna do it?
No, when it's so close to Eclipse Fest, and then you've got Makers Market and Foodie Fest. If there's another nonprofit that would like to seek that out for a fundraiser, that would be great.
But it's June, I mean, Eclipse is in April, so...
We have done it in June.
Well, that's, past five years we've done it in June. So, somebody needs to take it over.
Yeah.
So, y'all know anybody that...
Any nonprofit?
Needs an event as a fundraiser.
Mm-hmm, that would be great.
Somebody can do Spring Fest.
Okay, guys, that's all I've got.
JP, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
We really do?